Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Warrenville City Council regular meeting for February 4th, 2019. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Davalos is excused. Thank you. Only would you please stand as you're able and join me for the Bloods' Civil Elegance. We begin the public part of our budget process this evening with a presentation by Community Development and Economic Development Director Mensah on the Community Development Department. So Ron, welcome this evening. Thanks for kicking this off. We're excited to hear what you have to say. Good evening, and thank you once again for the opportunity to be here and make this annual presentation to the City Council. Oh yeah, that's the presentation. You don't want all the words. You don't want to have to read them and hear them. I do appreciate it, and I can tell you that every year that I prepare for this, I feel a little more comfortable about it, and I kind of appreciate the process. Gives me a time to kind of step back from the day-to-day hustle-bustle of department operations and city operations and really appreciate all the good work that we're doing, number one. And it helps me proactively, not me, the department, proactively identify what are priorities that we need to be focusing our time, energy, and effort on in the coming fiscal year. But before I talk about what we've identified as our accomplishments and priorities, I did want to take just a minute to recognize that all of the good stuff that I'm going to talk about tonight, and I think there's a lot of good stuff to talk about, probably longer than John wants me to talk, but there's a lot there, would not be able to, I wouldn't be able to present all this good stuff without the commitment and effort of all the Community Development Department staff. They do an enormous amount of work, and I have to tell you, I feel very fortunate to have a team of people down there that are true professionals. They really care about doing their job right. They care about the city of Warrenville, and they care about providing high-quality service to the community. And looking forward for the community's best interest in the future. That said, even them, they couldn't accomplish everything that I'm going to talk about tonight without the assistance of and support from the other departments in the community and from the City Council. So thank you very much to the rest of the department heads and to the City Council for all of the assistance that you guys continuously and relentlessly provide to the, and support for our department. So moving on, as I developed the presentation, it became pretty evident to me that most of the accomplishments, more important accomplishments anyway, that we've been involved with this fiscal year and the things that we're going to focus on next year really could fall into one of these three categories. So you'll see as I give the presentation this evening that the presentation will be structured around these categories of items. The first one is Operation and Core Service. I'm starting out with probably the least exciting effort that we're involved with. Sorry, but from the Community Development Department's standpoint, there's no cool pictures, there's nothing really show about, these are some process diagrams, but it's the ERP development. While it's not a fancy shiny new object, it is something that's extremely important, and the more time and energy that we've spent on it, the more excited we do get from a department's standpoint. Certainly, when it's all said and done, we're going to have a new electronic digitally-based system that allows us to replace the multiple paper-based systems that have evolved over many, many years and decades in City Hall and in the Community Development Department. That electronic system, based on what we've learned and the interaction we've had with the consultant and vendors that the City Council and the cities hired, is certainly going to allow us to communicate a lot more efficiently internally in the department, across departments, and with the customers that we serve. I think ultimately, we'll be more efficient, more professional, and the customers are going to be happy with, more happy with the service that we provide. So a huge effort that we're involved with and will be going forward into next fiscal year. The second accomplishment I wanted to acknowledge tonight is, from an operational standpoint, is the filling of the new civil engineer position. Last year, when we presented to you, we incorporated a decision package in the Community Development Department budget to create this position and fill this position. Ultimately, the budget was approved with that position in the, in the budget. Early this fiscal year, we did fill that position with David Romero. He's probably, would kill me if he knew I was showing you his mugshot here on TV. But David's been working with us from June of this year, and I have to tell you, there's no doubt that if we didn't have that position and David, that the amount and level of accomplishments I'd be presenting to you tonight would be less. I don't know how much less, but the fact of the matter is, having David in-house has allowed Christine Hocking, our senior civil engineer, and me to a lesser extent, to delegate a lot of kind of day-to-day operational permit, engineering permit, stormwater-related reviews, inspections, and customer interaction-type activities to David, and has freed up time both from my perspective and from Christine's perspective to, to focus on those more complex, large-scale, public infrastructure projects that the city's moving forward, the community enhancement projects that I'll talk about, and the large amount of complex private development that's being considered in the community and trying to work through the city's review and approval process. So he's been a critical component of what we're presenting tonight, and again, that's a, I think it's representative of the support that the City Council continuously gives to the community development. So I, again, I appreciate that very much. The third area that I wanted to touch on is the high level of building permit activity that we're expecting this fiscal year. If all the projects that are currently working through the final review and approval process and the city's processes right now are approved by the City Council and implemented by the developer in the timeframes that they've shared with us as their intent, we're projecting that we'll issue building permits that would have a total value of about $38 million before the end of this fiscal year. Just to give you some understanding of how that relates to last year, last year we issued building permits for about half that value. So it's a significant increase in building permit activity, a lot of complex buildings that would be involved in, in that, that process. A couple of specific building projects that I wanted to touch on that I think are important to highlight is the building permit activity in the Stafford Place project that Airheart's implementing on the former Civic Center redevelopment site, number one. We issued the first building permit for that project about 11 months ago. Over the following 11 months, we've issued 11 more building permits for a total of 12 building permits in that project, which is pretty good considering the Illinois economy, rising interest rates. It exceeds the projections that Airheart provided to the city when they were working for, through the purchase of the property and the approval process for their project. So I think it's a good sign for the community that that project's seeing the type of building permit activity it is. And then the Herrick Woods project that M.I. Holmes built in front of the middle school on Herrick Road. That project, from the time it started construction on-site development activities until we issued the last certificate of occupancy this fiscal year, was just over three and a half years to build out that 74-unit project. So that was very well-received in the market. The price points of the units in the project were originally anticipated to be in the mid to upper 300s. In reality, the majority of the homes in that subdivision sold from the low 400s to, some of them even sold in the low 500s. So it was extremely, from my perspective, I think from most people's perspective, is a very successful project for the, the community. And the last area of operations and core services I wanted to touch on that we've made some headway on is putting some pieces in place that allows us to better facilitate solar installations on private property in the city of Warrenville. Last fall, the City Council approved a policy statement that directed staff to prioritize the review and processing of private development, building permits, and development applications that involve solar installations. We also just had the City Council accept the Community Development Committee's recommendation to adopt the International Solar Energy Provisions and Appendix U, which should make it easier for people to understand the regulations and the design requirements for new solar installations. And it will actually, Appendix U requires new homes or residential structures to be designed in a manner that there's some minimum accommodations that would allow for future solar installation on those homes in a more cost-effective manner without that, those minimal accommodations. So make it easier in the future for people to add solar to their properties at less cost. We're actively involved and engaged in the Soul Smart program, which is a federal-funded, basically a technical assistance program that's available to municipalities, that helps municipalities identify what they can do to make it faster, easier, and more cost-effective for private entities to install solar on their properties. We're actively engaged with that, and hopefully we'll secure a Soul Smart designation sometime early next fiscal year. And then from a private development standpoint, we've been adamant in working with private developers to make them aware of the economics of solar, encourage them to evaluate the economics of solar in their projects. And actually, a couple of the developments that are working through the city's review and approval process, the developers have made commitments to incorporate some solar provisions in those projects. I think a large part is the city, as a result of the efforts of the city. From a community enhancement standpoint, by far the most visible and prominent community enhancement that we've helped accomplish this year is the final phase of the Route 56 Streetscape Enhancement Project. This has been a long project. We received the million-dollar grant from the state in 2010, so like an eight-and-a-half-year project. I would call that organizational grit, passion, and perseverance, that we stood with it and we were able to finally accomplish what we set out to accomplish originally. It's been a long time coming, but I, at least I've received a lot of positive feedback for the, the improvements that are there, and we're closing and finalizing that project before the end of the fiscal year. Another project we've made some progress on is the Illinois Prairie Path Trailhead Project. This is paper progress. As part of this project, we've, the City Council accepted the recommendation from the Trailhead Work Group and endorsed a preferred alternative and authorized staff to move forward with and negotiate a preliminary engineering design contract. That work is ongoing right now. We expect to bring back that preliminary engineering design contract for City Council consideration in the next couple of months and begin that work yet this fiscal year. There's a lot of stakeholders, both internally and externally, involved with that. It was kind of slowed the progress on that process, and we have to work through some of the stakeholder concerns before we move forward with the preliminary engineering design, or finalizing the preliminary engineering design contract. The second significant project we've made some more paper progress on is the Mack Road Trail Improvement Project, which has evolved to include the replacement of the Mack Road Bridge. In 2015, we approved, we received the original grant award for the trail improvement project of like $500,000. As part of the preliminary engineering design process for that, we needed to evaluate the structural condition of the Mack Road Bridge to see if it could accommodate a trail improvement project on the bridge or attach the bridge in some form or another. That analysis identified that the bridge was at a point in its life where the condition really warranted replacement. So we went back to the state and applied for state funding to proceed with the engineering design for a replacement bridge. We get, we awarded that funding this year. We've negotiated a engineering design contract for the preliminary engineering design for the combined project. That was endorsed by the City Council along with a IGA with the state that outlines our kind of funding commitments between each other. We forwarded that to the state before the end of the year, last year, calendar year, and we're waiting for them to approve it so we can move forward with that work. But it is something we expect to move forward with preliminary engineering design yet this fiscal year. The area where I think that we've spent the most time and made some really significant progress on is implementing the city's economic development plan. The City Council adopted that plan in 2015. This is the economic, overall economic development goal of that plan. You've seen that before, I'm not going to read it, you can read it, we have it in paper. But the way that plan is structured is it identifies the overall economic development goal. Underneath that goal, there's a series of eight detailed objectives, and under each objective, there's a series of implementation actions that really, together, the, the implementation actions and the objectives really create the roadmap that if the city's going to achieve this goal, needs to follow. And so this past fiscal year, we've made, from my perspective, I think from the Community Development Department's perspective, a lot of progress in achieving or advancing a lot of the individual objectives in that plan. So I wanted to take just a few minutes to highlight where I think we've made some material advancements. The objective number three is to facilitate and support the implementation of, excuse me, well-designed mixed-use development in the Route 59 corridor. For a long period of time, especially as it relates to the Southwest District, decades, there really was very little private investment in that area, and there was a lot of reasons. But one of the main reasons is that there was very little public infrastructure that would support high-quality, significant private investment and development in that area. One of the things that we were missing out in that area was sanitary sewer mains. A lot of the area was not served with city sanitary sewers. New development, in most cases, needs to be connected to city sewers. So this past year, the Community Development Department engineering staff worked closely with the Public Works staff to finalize the design and bid out and ultimately implement a major sanitary sewer extension project. We extended, the city extended the Landon Avenue sewer from, or the sewer, sewer mains from Landon Avenue out to the new Duke Parkway Route 59 intersection. So now all of the major development opportunity sites in the Southwest corridor now have access to city sewer. So that was a big accomplishment from my perspective. Another area where we've made some significant headway, this is more on paper, is the work that we've done with the Two Brothers Brewing Company to help advance their project. We have either a meeting, a telephone call, or an email conversation with the Two Brothers Development Team, at least weekly, if not more, over the past couple of years. As part of those ongoing conversations and that dialogue of how we can help, how we, the city can help them move forward and implement their corporate campus project on the 20 acres of project, or property that they own at the northwest corner of Route 59 and Route 56, the City Council approved the recommendation from the Economic Development Representatives last year to move forward with soliciting proposals for the purchase and redevelopment of the property that the city owns at the northeast corner of that intersection. As part of that process, a couple different entities submitted proposals for the potential acquisition and development of our property. The Two Brothers Group was one of those. They were ultimately identified as the preferred purchaser and developer of our property. City Council's designated staff to work with them, staff in the city's redevelopment attorney to work with them to develop a redevelopment agreement that would tie their potential purchase and development of our property to their moving forward with their project on their property, and both projects would be coordinated from a design-character standpoint. So that was a big step forward, we're just starting the process to negotiate that redevelopment agreement, but it is something that I, I hope and believe that the Two Brothers will move forward with in the, in the coming years. Objective number four of the economic development plan is to encourage, plan for, encourage high, high-quality, appropriately scaled, and located new higher-density residential development in the community. Encouraging and accommodating new high-quality, higher-density residential development was a intentional and important component of the city's overall economic development strategy. The feeling was is that we need to have more people with disposable income to support the type of commercial and retail restaurant development that the community would like to see. So there's a couple of projects that I wanted to call attention to that we've helped advance this year to a certain degree. The Lexington Trace Project and the Everton Project, both in the Southwest District corridor. We have spent an enormous amount of time reviewing the preliminary and final plans for these projects. The preliminary plans for both projects have been approved by the City Council. The final plans are in the review process, and we expect to be in a position to present those final plans for City Council, or for Plan Commission, and then ultimately City Council approval yet this fiscal year. So those are two projects that are pretty important to the Southwest District. Altogether, we're talking about 454 new households with a combined annual estimated household income of like $34 million each year. That's important because it's those people and that household income spending power that will help support the new commercial development that we hope to see and facilitate out in this area, including the commercial development that's, the Two Brothers have shown on their concept plan around their corporate campus. So these projects are, are moving forward, and the City Council, I'm expecting, will have a, an opportunity to make a final decision on those, both this fiscal year. Objective number five is to facilitate additional complementary development in the Cantera Project. The two projects I wanted to highlight here are the Riverview West Project in Cantera Suburb area C, and the Vanguard Project down by the theater. Both of these projects are projects that have received preliminary approvals from the, the City Council, and both have been actively working this fiscal year through the city's final engineering, final PUD review and approval process. And again, it's very likely that one or both of these projects will be before the City Council for final approval before the end of this fiscal year. They're both important, again, kind of consistent with what I just spoke about in the, the other two projects on Route 59. There's 666 new households in this, these projects, if they get built out as currently proposed. Collectively, you're talking like $54 million worth of new annual household income. Like out in Route 59, those households, the people that live in those households will spend dollars to support our existing businesses in our community, in Cantera and the area surrounding Cantera, and they certainly will make it more attractive for additional complementary desirable commercial development in those same areas. We're just beginning to work forward on the Alden Foundation's Horizon Project, which is a project that is in the Old Town Civic Center suburbia and kind of consistent with objective six of the economic development plan. They've proposed to assemble the approximately four acres of property at the northeast corner of Batavia and Route 56. There's two vacant lots, and then there's two home, two lots that are improved with homes, and redevelop that property with a 71-unit affordable senior housing project. It would be owned and operated by a for-profit business, so it would pay property tax revenues. As part of the project, they would be dedicating, I think they're proposing to dedicate, dedicate like an acre and a half of open space along the river corridor to a public body. If you're interested in that project, the initial public hearing for the plant, preliminary planned unit development application is set to occur this Thursday at the Plan Commission Objective number eight is to assist and encourage existing local businesses to expand, grow, and succeed in the city of Warrenville. There's a couple of, of things that we've been working on, I think are worth noting here tonight. We spent a lot of time working with the state and the county to advance the Deo Road Turn Lane Improvement Project, and I think that before this fiscal year ends, we'll have the proper approvals from the state of Illinois to move forward with the bidding of that project so it could be constructed in the summer. That project will definitely improve the efficiency of access into and out of the commercial areas along the south side of Deo Road across from the Cantera Theater Complex. Something the City Council probably isn't aware of, but we've been working for, from a staff perspective, for like the last eight to 10 years with the ownership of the Cantera Theater Complex, encouraging them, cajoling them to move forward with a comprehensive monument signage plan for the property. At this point in time, and since day one, there's only one monument sign for that whole development. It's located right at the corner of Winfield Road and Deo Road, and the only business that's, or I think the only business is advertised on it, maybe Main Events on there now, but is Regal Theater. And as the vegetation has grown up on that project and matured, it's become harder and harder to see the different businesses, the restaurants that are located in that project. And in the communications that we regularly have with those restaurants, they really feel that that's negatively impacting their, the success and operation of their businesses. So the fact of the matter is, is that they don't own the property where all these monument signs would be, need to be constructed, it would need to be done by the, the owner of the, the property. And finally, as part of the review and approval of the Vanguard Apartment Project, we were able to convince the developer that they needed to make a commitment to implement that signage package. So they are working forward on that, they've made that commitment. We've been reviewing the, the final design plans for that monument signage package and expect that that will be working its way through the city's approval process so it could be constructed this summer. And I know the businesses in that, that development are going to be really happy that they'll have exposure on the, along the perimeter roadways there. Brings me to our priorities for, for next fiscal year. Again, kind of broken down into the same three categories. More ERP, more ERP, and more ERP, basic city. We're going to get it done, and we'll be better off for it. We're also going to be working closely with the Administration Department on updating the city's website this coming fiscal year. For better or for worse, a lot of the data and information that's on that website is generated and posted through the Community Development Department, so we'll be working closely with Christine to make sure that it's all necessary and appropriate and it's structured in a manner that's easy accessible, easily accessible to the public. One of the things that we're going to spend a huge amount of time and resources on is managing all the new development that we're anticipating that's going to be happening next fiscal year. In total, we're talking, if all the projects that are currently working through the final review and approval process happen, we're talking about over 100 acres of new development in the community moving forward next year. Together, those 100 acres of development represent more than $200 million worth of private investment in the community. We're anticipating that if all of the, they all get approved and they all move forward as the developers are currently planning and proposing, that we'll issue building permits next fiscal year, have a total value of $80 million. That would be higher than any year that we ever had, even at the peak of Cantera. We did prepare, and we will include a decision package in the budget folder that you haven't yet received, that you're going to be receiving in the coming weeks, in which we're proposing to, we're proposing $26,000 worth of funding that would allow us to hire some outside consultant assistants that would have office hours to help assist with the zoning review and administration of all the large amount of development that we're anticipating to occur next fiscal year. We'll be working closely with the, we anticipate working closely with the Public Works Department to advance a couple of important city infrastructure projects. First and foremost, advance the design for a new well, water tower, and iron-removal system out in the Southwest District area of the community, and to design and implement a important looping of two different city water mains. Basically, looping the existing dead-end water main on the east side of 59 with the looping the existing dead-end water main on the east side of 59 with the water main that the city a few years back constructed on Land and Avenue. We're expecting to work with the city council to fully evaluate the potential implementation and adoption of a rental registration program, not implementing the program, just deciding whether or not it's something that we feel is appropriate and necessary to implement in the community, what those costs would be so that next fiscal year, if it's decided to move forward with that, we can incorporate monies in the budget to actually implement such a program. And then finally, from an operational standpoint, but not last, or not least, we are committed to working with the fire district to update the existing intergovernmental agreement that we have with the fire district that establishes the relationship between the city and the fire district from a kind of a code enforcement, building, development plan, review, and inspection process. From a community enhancement project, we have a decision package in the budget that allows us to move forward with the final engineering, in the proposed budget for next year, allows us to move forward with the final engineering design for the Illinois Prairie Path Trailhead Project. We also have a decision package that would allow us to move forward with the final design, engineering design for the Mack Road Trail Improvement Bridge Replacement Project. We've also created a decision package that would provide funding that would enable us to actually finish the remediation of the contamination that migrated from Civic Center Redevelopment Site Number One off-site that we weren't able to dig, dig out and clean up when we cleaned up the rest of the contamination on Civic Center Redevelopment Site Number One, because there's a corner of the contamination that migrated really close to an off-site detached garage. And we only, we could only dig so close to that garage without compromising the structural integrity of that garage. So we did that. We put some chemicals in the ground, left the chemicals on the ground when we filled the hole back in. This past fall, we went back out and tested that area to see if the chemicals had remediated the remnant contamination down to levels that didn't require or merit cleanup. Unfortunately, that's not the case. So next calendar year, fiscal year, we'll be working forward to design a more active remediation program to deal with that off-site contamination. And finally, last but not least, from a community enhancement standpoint, last year, when the city council approved the budget, they approved a decision package that incorporated $564,000 of funding into the budget that would allow the city to potentially purchase and pay for cleanup costs related to the contamination on the Sitgo property for a variety of reasons, all directly related to the position and attitude of the existing owner of that property. City really hadn't, hasn't had an opportunity to move forward with that effort in any meaningful manner. But that's not to say in the next fiscal year that won't be the case. So we are proposing as part of the budget for next calendar year, at least from the community development standpoint, to carry over, rebudget those funds. So if that opportunity does present itself, the council would have the ability to make a decision and potentially move forward with acquisition and/or cleanup of that property. Then finally, from an economic development standpoint, other than dealing with all the new development that's kind of already in process, we fully expect to implement the Deo Road Turn Lane improvements, which will definitely make the area along the south side of Deo Road more attractive for commercial uses. There's been a large amount of vacancy in that area for a fairly long protracted period of time. With the turning lane improvements, we think that that area is going to become more desirable again, especially if there's some additional residential development close by. We've been working closely with the owners of the Cantera Theater Complex and fully expect in the next four to five months that they'll be doing a application for a planned unit development amendment that would allow them to create another outlot on the theater complex in the area of somewhat underutilized parking located between the theater building and Chewy's that could accommodate the construction of a new hotel. We've had a variety of interaction with developers and end-users that are interested in developing some commercial uses, specifically some restaurant uses on the commercial component of the Everton Project, right at the intersection of Duke Parkway and Route 59, if that Everton Project does move forward this year. And then finally, last but not least, we're committed to working with the two brothers. It's a long haul with the two brothers to help get their project through the city's preliminary and final PUD review process this coming fiscal year so that they could begin construction the following fiscal year. That's a lot, but that's it. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address those questions.
Thank you, Brian. A lot of exciting potential coming and in progress right now. So thank you for the presentation. Questions from the council? Anyone? I think you did a pretty thorough job of explaining what we've got going, so thank you. Alderman Widener.
All right. Thank you very much for the informative report. I'm certainly excited and appreciate the staff's energy and focus on all things solar. So I appreciate your steps forward on that. And then I know the community has an awful lot of questions about some of the trail developments and the bridges and so forth. Besides, is there any way, once we get done with the planning, that you can predict for the viewers, like when construction and development might actually take place with Illinois Prairie or the Trailhead Project and then the Mack Road Bridge and Trail Project?
I think the best-case scenario is that next year, we include funds in the budget, next fiscal year, fiscal year 2020, we include funds in the budget for final engineering and we work through the final engineering design process for both of those projects next fiscal year. And the following fiscal year, we include money in the budget for construction-related activities and potentially towards the end of that following fiscal year is when construction might be able to start.
Thank you. I have one other.
Best-case scenario.
I also wanted to ask, you know, from a community enhancement point of view, I know your department, you know, besides just looking at the building of the apartments and the residences and everything like that, they're also very alert to looking for opportunities that'll enhance the community, like trail connections and things like that. Could you go over that process a little bit about how, when new development is being proposed, you react to it?
Sure. What, one thing I really appreciate and have come to truly value in the city of Warrenville is the city and the council's commitment to develop long-term planning policy documents, like the economic development plan, but we've taken the time and energy to invest in the development of bike and pedestrian plans, the southwest district suburbia plan, the Old Town Civic Center suburbia plan, the TIF III and IV redevelopment plans. All of these policy documents, you know, they, they kind of paint a vision of what we would like to accomplish. And from the community development department's standpoint, they become invaluable when we sit down and deal with new developers or developers that are trying to accomplish something in our community. Those things aren't just documents that sit on the shelf. We know what's, because the council's taken the time, spent the money and made the effort to develop those documents with a lot of public input, we know what's important to the community. And those things give us, they're kind of a reference point of when we're dealing with those developers. Here's what the community's already talked about and established is important to the community and from a path perspective. These are the types of things we want to see implemented and advanced as part of your project. And those policy documents show it. So when we're sitting down and negotiating and explaining to a developer, it's not like just something we're making up. They know that the community has provided input and the city council's endorsed that this is an important thing. So if they hope to have their project approved, they better incorporate those specific elements of those plans into their project. So it, it starts from developing the policy documents and then from the first meetings that we have with people that are looking to do projects in our community. We're familiar with those policy documents and we point it out to the developers so that they know upfront what the expectations of the community would be.
Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. When, when you announce things like the building permit activity for the next fiscal year might be the most in Warrenville's history, even including the very successful Cantera Development when TIF I was really going strong, you know, that really says something, that really makes a statement to us about how much we have on our plate right now, how much Warrenville is growing, how much activity we are going to see in the near future, how much Warrenville is a desirable place to bring businesses and to build homes and for people to live and work. And that is really a credit to our community and it really, it really makes a difference in the way that we spend our staff time and the resources that we need to give to our staff to deal with that tremendous amount of activity. So can you give me a little bit more of a sneak peek about the decision package on extra staffing needs to, to deal with that?
Yeah. What we, we've been talking about that there's going to, you know, we kind of anticipate that this, this is going to be somewhat of a blip, that, you know, not, we're not going to be issuing $80 million worth of building permits for years on end. This is something, a kind of a peak in the cycle. There's a lot of reasons why we're seeing that peak in the cycle. I think, you know, the city's kind of positioned itself to attract that type of quality investment. And the real estate market and the economy is somewhat supportive of that, that's part of it. But the reality of it is, is that we don't have enough staff resources to effectively continue to process all the development-related applications and all the normal day-to-day responsibility or applications that we receive. I mean, last year, I think we issued like 650 building permits. A lot of those were individual, or building permits for individual things that a resident wanted to do on their house. And believe me, in some cases, coordinating and collaborating with a resident to help them understand what the zoning requirements are for their property, take as much time, not, not for a big project, but take a lot of time and effort. And so what we're anticipating that this coming fiscal year is that we're going to need to bring in some additional resources in-house, not, not a part-time city employee, but a consultant that would be working for the city that would work maybe 16 hours a week, have office hours in the, in the city hall building to help process and interact on those, all those building permits that we're going to be interacting or dealing with. And if, for whatever reason, we don't have that level of building permit activity, that's a consultant, so we're not going to be spending those dollars. 16 hours was kind of the best guess that we could make at this point in time of what we need to add for some of that, you know, additional assistance to overcome that blip.
Okay. So.
So it's like $26,000 over the fiscal year is what the proposal is.
Okay. So associated with that, I guess, is, you know, my concerns about staff being stretched too thin now or in the interim until such a decision package might be approved or might not be approved. What sort of, you know, ongoing operations issues are you having, if any?
Well, fortunately, right now, we've got a lot of large development projects that are trying to work their way through the city's review and approval process and get themselves on a plant commission agenda and their complex projects. Fortunately, we've been able to kind of manage those projects. They haven't all shown up on the doorstep at the same time. They're all kind of working their way through the process, but they're kind of, you know, we'll get one review, one project review, give their comments back. At the same time, another project is submitting their response to the comments that we had given to them. So right now, we're effectively managing that and part of that is because, part of that is because the building permit activity at this time of year is pretty low. Not, not a lot happening when it's 20 degrees below zero. We anticipate that in the next month or two, that's going to start picking up and people preparing for implementing projects that are, they're going to want to get going as soon as the weather permits in the spring. So we may even have ultimately a conversation with the city council about, is there an ability to, to secure some of these resources before the next budget year, if necessary. We're, you know, we're still kind of playing it out to see how things evolve with all these projects. So it's a work in progress. We evaluate and talk about it on a regular basis.
I mean, that was my thought. Certainly, our fiscal year doesn't line up neatly with the start of the construction season.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
So my last question has to do with the Two Brothers Project, which you referenced a couple of different times in your presentation. I've heard so much excitement about this from residents, people who are anticipating it being built almost immediately. I've had to tell them, hang on, it's not happening as fast as all that. Can you, can you talk about that a little bit, the timeline, so that people who are, you know, rightly excited about this, this big expansion of a successful local business might hold their horses just a moment.
Yeah. The fact of the matter is, it's a extremely large undertaking, a complex project by the two brothers. They are not developers. They are entrepreneurs that have a lot of successful, different businesses that they are trying to manage as family businesses. So that, that makes it difficult for them to focus all the time and energy, at least from our perspective, and effort necessary to move this type of project forward efficiently. They've been talking with the city for probably eight to 10 years now about the possibility of moving forward with a large expansion project. A few years back, they did pull the trigger to buy the property at the northwest corner of the, the intersection there, and they've been working very closely with the city to try to move forward and understand the city's processes, balance those and mesh those with design, funding processes for the project. It's, you know, it's like an $80 million project, so they're going to need a lot of outside financial funding assistance to make that happen. Fortunately, about two years ago, they did hire a professional developer that has been working with them to help them understand the decision process and the things that they need to be doing in order to move this process forward. That's been extremely helpful from the city's perspective to keep chipping away at the mountain of things that they need to chip away at to eventually put themselves in the position to implement it. I can tell you, though, that it's, you know, you're talking a best-case scenario of implementation kind of in a similar timeline as the, the big community enhancement projects that Alderman Widener questioned. You know, moving through the city's planned unit development review and approval processes over the next year or so is a reasonable expectation if they stay focused on it, which would position them to be at a point, assuming they can get funding, to construct their project, start constructing their project the following year. So it's still a couple, unfortunately, it's a couple of years out from my perspective.
Okay. Thank you so much for your very informative presentation.
Thank you. Alderman Perry.
Thanks for the presentation. It was great and it's amazing to see how much work is going on and a lot of people really don't realize that all these things are happening. You know, they hear things and you get questioned as to when is it happening, where is it going to happen? I've heard this, I've heard that. But what I would like people to understand also is that when you say that the Lexington Trace and the Everton Projects are going to bring in 454 new households with many millions of dollars worth of income to be used in, hopefully, in Warrenville. And that is one of the reasons that Two Brothers moved their project to encapsulate a larger area and not only use the northwest corner, but also use the northeast corner. And because of those households, they knew that they, we were going to have a lot more money in this area to spend, a lot more people, and they decided to go bigger and make their project something that we, as the city of Warrenville and they will, people will be proud of. So I just want, I know that there were a lot of people who had questions about both of those projects and if they were the right thing to do. But obviously, a business like Two Brothers has decided it is the right thing to do because they know that they can go forward and do the creative things that those two guys have always done. They have great ideas and they always need to have somebody to kind of channel them, but they are two guys that just have great ideas that they, they work at. So that's, that's what I'm happy about, is that there is a reason for those two projects, the Lexington and the Everton, to be done.
City Administrator Coakley.
Thank you. I was just going to echo what the mayor had started before this presentation and introducing it. This is just the start of our public budget presentation. This is just the start of our public budget presentations. They will go on, I think we have presentations every meeting right up, or right up until the budget workshop, which will be on a Saturday morning. Everyone's invited. We usually don't get a lot of public at that time, starting at nine AM coming until noon. The sixteenth of March, I know everyone up here has it on their calendar with a big star next to it. We'll go over all the, we'll wrap everything up. About approximately three weeks from now, the budget booklets will be distributed. So if council wishes, you can certainly save copies of the presentation. If you want to refer back to the things you've made, I've seen a lot of you making notes tonight, you can use those to review the budget and kind of go through the guideline. You'll have at least two weeks to review everything, and we will still be having the budget discussions on every agenda of some type or level, all the way through the adoption of the budget, on the second council meeting, the third, which is the third Monday in April. So there's a lot of the process left. This is just the start. I can see the excitement on everybody's face as we get into more budget procedures, and it's probably more exciting than the ERP process, but still, sorry. Thank you.
It's a good thing we're committed to the ERP, isn't it? Because they're taking their hits tonight. Any other questions for Ron? Ron, again, very well done. Thank you. It's an exciting time to be in Warrenville.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on with the rest of the meeting, beginning with citizens' comments. We have two folks who've signed up this evening, Bob Seibert and Connie Schmidt. Both of you are veterans. Come on up here to the podium. Oh, we have a third? Sure, come on. We'll take it. That's all right, no problem. Thank you, sure.
My name is Connie Schmidt. I live at three South 501 Land and Drive, and thank you for the opportunity, opportunity to address you tonight. I'd like to speak on two topics, so I'll make the first one pretty brief. I didn't even know Ron was gonna do that thing. And I wanted to tell you, I'm so very, very happy that our community of Warrenville has joined the Soul Smart coal heart. We will welcome clean energy development into our new construction projects with ease. I sincerely thank the city aldermen, who have been in favor of solar for the last couple of years. They've talked to me about it, and I really want to thank our city staff, who have been so positive for solar development, clean energy development. This indeed puts Warrenville on the map as a progressive community. Secondly, I'd like to say that rumor out there has it, that it is being discussed that the paver bricks that make up Warrenville Road may be removed for a more traditional asphalt or concrete road. This makes me sad. Warrenville was progressive by placing this road in our community. It may not be perfect, but no road is, and judging by the replacement schedule that all levels of government have for their surfaces, no road is perfect. Here are some arguments for leaving the road intact. There are four. One, we slow down when we drive on this surface. We are more respectful of the residential setting of this road, and we travel more carefully with respect to pedestrians, school kids, pets, wildlife, and of course, other cars. Two, although this road doesn't drain perfectly, neither do other surfaces, and I drove around town the last few days looking for evidence of roads that weren't draining well and found plenty. Three, the whole purpose of the pavers was to allow water to drain more slowly through the soil so that salt and chemicals from, that run off of cars, don't rush into our drains and then rush to our river or our creek. And it is providing that purpose. I challenge you, I told my sister about this, who lives in Austin, Texas, and every time she comes to visit, she's charmed by our road. And so I challenge you, and she suggested I add this to my, my comments, to talk to people who journey through Warrenville, who have a first look at our paver road. My family and my personal contacts that come to town are warmed by this very historical look, but it has a very progressive purpose. So I am encouraging you to take some time and discuss this possible topic that's on the docket for possible, it's a rumor, I don't know how real it is. So please, I hope you'll discuss it further.
Thank you, Connie. Actually, there has been extensive discussion of that topic, and the council has voted to take the pavers out at this point and replace it with, with the asphalt. So you can check the record to see when that discussion was held. We appreciate your comments, but all of those things were taken into account. Sadly, the road is deteriorating far faster than we can keep up with repairing it, and there are a number of other reasons why the council voted to take the road out. So that's where we're at.
I'm still glad about Soul Smart.
Of course. And I think we're all sad about the pavers coming out also. All of us recognize the charm, the traffic calming, and all the other positive attributes. The problem was that there were too many negatives going forward to make that a practical consideration, so that's where we're at. Bob Seibert?
I have here City of Warrenville Ordinance 2118, which was passed on March 3rd, 2004. In the body, it states, whereas the mayor and city council believe and hereby declare that it is the best interest of the city and its residents to adopt a policy with respect to property taxes and property tax reduction in the event the city becomes a home rule Section three states, in the event the city becomes a home rule municipality, which it did, and the force behind this was that in fiscal 205, the city estimated that to fiscal 2010, the city would be at a six-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit due to cantera and the added cost of operating the municipality. It continues, section three there, it shall be the policy of the city to consider property tax reductions or tax abatements when the home rule sales tax begins to generate revenue to the city. The source of any such property tax reductions or property tax abatements shall be the surplus revenues from the home rule sales tax. First of all, since 2004, there has never been a policy on tax reduction or abatement. Secondly, since 2010, the incremental property tax and home rule sales tax has equaled twelve million dollars. At the same time, with this development in revenue, there has not been one dime of tax relief to the taxpayers. If we listen tonight to all the development, eighty million, hundred million, two hundred million, without a tax policy, there will be no tax relief for the taxpayers. This is due to the structure. Section two states that will still remain a non-home rule on the yearly tax levy, but what that does is illustrates there will be every year an increase in taxes, no reductions. So the policy here says it's important, the city and the city council 2004, that it's important to have a tax policy reduction. Never followed the ordinance 2118. If you continue as to what was stated in 2018, you said, we captured five million in EAV. So you captured five million. What does it mean to capture five million? Does John Coakley ride out on a horse with a rope and capture? Do you capture the property developers? They're already paying their money. They're gonna pay their taxes. You're capturing that amount of money from the existing taxpayers because if you didn't capture it, it would go into the tax and lower the tax rate, which would give a reduction in property taxes to all the taxpayers. So if you have no tax policy, you have no relief for the taxpayers. And the only person that hasn't been represented here in all of this is the taxpayer.
Thank you, Bob. Tom? And I'm sorry, I couldn't quite make out your last name, so you all.
Smiley.
Smiley, very good, thank you.
Appreciate your time. I live at three S zero three zero Sunset Court, or no, Sunset Drive, sorry, Sunset Court's right about it. My wife and I moved into Warrenville. We're coming up on our two-year anniversary in March, so I am a new, first-time homeowner. My home is the, I'm the second owner of my home, so what I'd at least like to say to you, you all, is thank you for providing a place for me to start a family. I have a one-year-old as of eight days from now, and a four-year-old in March. So you guys have been able to allow me to start a family, and my best friend lives two blocks away on Harvest Court, and I feel like we are kind of the, what I've noticed is there's a lot of good people in Warrenville, and I'm happy to start a younger group of people moving into Warrenville to kind of revitalize the area. So I appreciate the snow removal. I have many, I grew up in Lombard, lived in Wheaton and Glen Owen, Bloomingdale, since I graduated college, and my wife grew up in Elmer, so we are DuPage faithful. But many other towns around us did not have the adequate snow removal that we did. I have the truck go by three times while I was out plowing my snow, and my dad's like, I had maybe once, so thank you for that. I also appreciate the firework ordinance. I remember I came to the office, exasperated that my daughter was screaming, please make it stop. I live next to a Vietnam War vet. I can only imagine what that does to him, him at night. And, and then this year, there was adequate police patrolling, and I appreciate that. Put me at ease, put my family at ease, and I'm sure it probably put him at ease as well, thinking of our veterans. And then I also wanted to say thank you to the Park District for paving the Summer Lakes path. That has made it very nice for my children to learn to walk and for us to get to the park and play, so appreciate everything that you guys are doing. Had a couple things that I at least wanted to share. I know many of you would consider me a young buck, so while I do bring some spunk and some energy, I would ask that you give me some grace, because I probably do not have the wisdom and the understanding and the know-how that, all that goes into tiffs and all this stuff. So bear with me as I just share my comments. First, Google Maps and Apple, I plug my address in, it shows up as West Chicago. While West Chicago is a nice city to our north, I do not live there. I have sent a note to Google Maps for a correction. I don't know if there's anything that somebody can do from a marketing perspective, but I do not wish to see my house or somebody else, I want to see Warrenville proudly displayed on somebody's address. I see that in, if I count my Roman numerals correctly, section six C here, you're gonna have somebody talk about, to residents about the Lakeview Drive, opening that up. As I live right on that curve, right off of Barclay turns into Sunset, I appreciate that one way very much. Again, I have young kids. My friend moved down on Harvest Court, has young kids. We walk that area regularly. There are some offenders that do drive by there. You're not gonna catch everybody, I understand that. But as there's going to be, what it sounds like immense construction and traffic, I would argue and urge that you keep that a one-way for the safety of our kids. So just keep that in mind, as that you, you know, I see that you're gonna be asking people. So with that comes the building of the Two Brothers facility. I would also ask that you keep in mind the current craft brewing and brewing, I gotta say, economy as a whole. While craft beer, according to the Brewers Association, was up five percent this year, there was also an increase, we are seeing seven thousand local breweries, which is at an all-time max, and there's pace to hit about eight thousand. So as you can see, local is best. If you've been around since nineteen ninety-six, like Two Brothers, you also came in the same year as Three Floyds, Stone, which is actually declining. DeShues Brewery, which was the eighth-largest craft brewery in the country, let off ten percent of its employees. You see breweries like Avery, who expanded with a forty-million-dollar facility, and then sold to San Miguel, which is a conglomerate. You've seen Goose Island sell to Anheuser-Busch. You've seen Boulevard and Firestone Walker send to Duval Morgat, which is a Belgian-owned subsidiary. So just be cautious that while they do have fifty million from their sale to Reyes Holdings, which they got from the feds finding out that they had two parts of the three-tiered system in Illinois, unfortunately, while they have money, I would just caution, and while they have diversified into spirits and coffee, I would argue that they took that money and they should have reinvested it into their brewery rather than diversifying. So please, as you're pursuing this, I, while I live there and I welcome development, and that's exciting to see what that has to do, please keep your eyes open and your mind open that the craft industry and the beer industry is gonna see a correction. I used to work in the industry as of six months ago. I worked in the industry for six years with Breakthrough Beverage. I did sell against Two Brothers, but in the craft family, we are all brothers. It just worries me, I don't want to see a big facility go up, that's exciting, and then something happens and their sales don't match, or their sales can't compete, and they have to sell their, like, you gotta get your capital from somewhere. So just, just be cautious that, while I want to see them succeed, the climate in the brewing community is one where you're, you're, you eat or be eaten. I would ask that you check their, which you probably have done diligently already, check their, their forecasting and their, their sales records for the last couple of years. Check to see how their restaurant in Naperville is doing. Check to see how the Roundhouse is doing in Aurora. If those facilities aren't performing, that might be an indicator that, while customers and people in this area, and while we might be getting some new development in this area, I've seen that their demographic is not the twenty-one to thirty-five-year-old consumer. It's the forty, forty-ish to sixty-year-old consumer. Or my father, who's seventy-five, he loves Domain to Page, so I get it. So just, just while, while I am excited about the development, just be cautious and ask questions as to how they are doing and how they see their vibrancy. I would hate for something to happen and then they sell, and that property is no longer something that's intrinsically Warrenville, because they, they are from Warrenville. So just be cautious on that. Then with that development, I was just thinking of the traffic on fifty-nine. I know south of Deal in Naperville, it was two lanes for the longest time, and it was the worst road you could ever drive on. I'm just thinking up here, it's still two lanes either way. Do you see, foresee three lanes up in our stretch, up to like Joliet Road-ish at some point as we get more? Yeah. So I just remember, like, in Naperville, it was two lanes going both So I just remember, like, in Naperville, it was two lanes going both ways for the longest time, and as I see more traffic, especially trucks and semi-trucks, that also kind of scares me with kids. We might need to expand that road. And then lastly, one of the reasons my wife and I moved here was because we liked that it was still a small community, close to other cool towns, and it was too, Batavia was too far for us. But we liked that it was rather green, spacious, you had woods, you had cornfields. Right when you got off of 88, you felt like you were somewhere safe and at home, somewhere welcoming. And what kind of worries me and scares me is all the development. I'm not like a tree hug or anything, but I do like the fact that I can walk trails easily and get connected with different areas and park districts and things like that. And I guess I'm just worried that I see this huge place by Two Brothers, and there's all this forest and greenery, and it's nice to drive home and feel like I'm kind of insulated a little bit. And I'm just worried that we're gonna pave paradise and, you know, put up a parking lot, I guess. So I guess just keep that in mind as well. And then lastly, I'm sorry for taking up your time. With the city center development, I just had a thought. My wife and I have been eyeing that property on Batavia and is it Route Butterfield Road or Route 56? That northwest area where the senior center's gonna go? And we kept thinking to ourselves since we've moved here, that would be a sweet spot for a restaurant with a patio overlooking the lake. Is there any possibility that you could take the Two Brothers plan and take that northeast section of those two restaurants and move that over there, and then the senior place over? I'm like, you already have a senior. You tried? I was just thinking, that'd be such a sweet place to overlook and see and the, and besides, you already have a senior center on Ferry Road and 59 anyway, so, you know, they have a lot of traffic anyways. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you so much. Look forward to being active in the city of Warrenville and raising my family. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Tom. Come back anytime. Okay, we'll move on to official staff comments. I have nothing to add this evening. Clerk? Treasurer? Alderman? Alderman Goodman?
First of all, I want to send my very sincerest thanks to the comm ed workmen who were out on Wednesday morning fixing the power outage in Maple Hill in minus 23-degree weather, so that all the people in my neighborhood got their power back after only a few hours on one of the coldest days of the year. So thank you very much. And, you know, those sorts of people, you know, really deserve our appreciation and should be definitely paid more than however much they were getting. And secondly, I want to reiterate my invitation, this Sunday, February 10, Fermilab is having its family open house. I mentioned it last week, I have a few more details. It's a free event from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Wilson Hall, so it'll be indoors in case things are cold by then. There's gonna be the Great Nutrino Hunt, the Cooler Than Cool show that Mr. Freeze puts on. There'll be a memorial for former lab director Leon Letterman, the Nobel Prize-winning physicist who recently passed away. And lots of hands-on activities for kids and their parents to enjoy with lots of scientists to answer all your questions about Fermilab. There are some tours that require registration ahead of time, but if you just feel like going at the last minute, please take your kids out for some science and a good time. Thank you.
Alderman Berry?
I just wanted to let Connie know that I was not happy when we had to say that the Warrenville road was going to change. I was here when we decided to build it the way it is with the pavers, and it was a great idea, but unfortunately, it, it hasn't worked out the way we expected it to. But next week, at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the Hole meeting, there will be some talk regarding the calming devices on the Warrenville road. So if anyone is interested in what will happen to that road, if they have any ideas on how to calm the traffic, that they show up at that meeting next Monday evening at 7:00 p.m., and that will be one of the items up for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Goodman reminded me that we had a water main break that our people, our utility people dealt with last Tuesday. I can only imagine what it's like being with water in a hole when it's below zero. It can't be very pleasant. They took care of that quickly, and no one lost their water service. So thank you to our guys. As usual, they do a terrific job for us. Appreciate it. Anyone else? City Administrator?
Two things come to mind from the discussion. One, Warrenville Road, I want everybody to remember, we won't have all the paver blocks on the roadway, but we are keeping them in the parking areas, so we're not losing everything. It's not the same, but it's, they performed far better, very successfully, in parking areas rather than in the drivelines. Second thing, speaking of last week's cold weather, we've all moved on because it got so much, 75 degrees warmer today than it was last week. Dealing with integers here. I just want to commend all the city staff, the people that had to work outside, the people that had to come to work just to staff the buildings, to make sure that if people needed us, we were here. Everybody performed very admirably, did really well. We had something, it could've been a lot worse. Other towns had bigger problems. Maple Hill was out for a couple hours, that got restored fortunately before it got terribly cold in people's houses. A couple hours you can sustain, a couple of days you can't at that temperature. We had a heat exchanger that went out at the police department. All kinds of things, but the city fared pretty well. We made this building into a warming center. We didn't have to have people use it, but we were here if they needed us. That's the time when we're public servants and local government are needed, when things get really bad. You don't know we're here on the day-to-day basis, that's a good thing. We're doing our jobs really well, we kind of fade into the background. Your streets work well, the water flows, the sewage goes away, everything's fine, but when you need us, we should be here. And fortunately, we didn't have anything worse. Just for everybody's benefit, we did buy everybody pizza that day for lunch, just to try to give them something. It was, I thought, the least that we could do for all the folks that had to get to work that day, braved all the storms. And all those folks that had to work outside, those of us that got into the building were freezing on the way in, but we were warm inside. Our police, our public works folks, our inspectors, were outside all day long and they were here. That's, just wanted to make sure I publicly said that, because they do a great job every day, and I forget to mention that, and this time they had to go over and above. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And of course, our police department. Adam R. Bleeh on the job as always. Appreciate it. City Attorney? I didn't hear. All right, approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener?
Yes, before I approve the, or make a motion to approve the agenda, I just wanted to take notice and remark about the fact that we'll be receiving and filing the minutes of the Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, the Environmental Advisory Commission, and the Police Pension Board, and also the Tourism and Arts Commission. I just want to express appreciation to all those citizens that volunteer their time and provide us with great efforts and wisdom in helping to manage and manage the affairs of the city of Warrenville. So with that, I move to approve the agenda for the February 4, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting.
Motion second by Alderman Wilson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved for this evening. We have several sets of minutes that need to be approved also. Alderman Widener?
Move to approve the minutes of the January 21, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting, to approve the minutes of the January 21, 2019 Closed Session Regular Meeting, and to approve the minutes of the January 28, 2019 Public Safety and Finance Committee of the Hole Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Discussion of those minutes. Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the minutes are approved. The consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and pass Resolution R2019-04, authorizing an agreement with Physic Electric and Communications Systems Incorporated for the procurement and installation of V- voice over internet protocol telecommunications system in the amount of $71,815. B, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and award $113,489 in hotel tax fund, tax grant funding to various applicants per the Tourism and Arts Commission Revised Recommendation Memo dated January 29, 2019. C, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and direct staff to survey the residence of Lakeview Drive and the adjacent cul-de-sacs to gather input on the potential for removing and opening up Barclay Avenue to allow access to Lakeview Drive, assessing the responses, and then determining whether public meetings should be scheduled. D, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation, approve the Warrenville Historical Society's grant request in the amount of $15,000 from the Hotel Tax Fund to cover the cost of their part-time museum director slash curator, and direct staff to include this funding in the FY 2020 budget. E, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve the request to solicit donations for the August 6, 2019 National Night Out Event. F, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation, designate Alderman Goodman and Bavir to work with the city administrator to draft a policy or protocol to honor former and current city officials when they pass away. G, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation, accept the updates to the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Plan for 2018, per the Staff Memo dated January 24, 2019, and direct staff to incorporate those adjustments into an updated CMRP document. H, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on December 11, 2018. I, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on December 18, 2018. J, receive and file minutes of the Police Pension Board Regular Meeting held on October 23, 2018. K, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Regular Meeting held on December 13, 2018. L, receive and file report of invoices paid up to January 20, 2019, in the amount of And M, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before February 19, 2019, in the amount of $382,769.61. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved for this evening. We have nothing under regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business, no new business, no necessity for a closed session, so I will entertain a motion for adjourning. Alderman Goodman?
I move to adjourn.
Second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you for your attention this evening.